...recent memory to protect us here in our town, our hometown, Acton, USA. Rarely if ever have these men and women of valor and honor asked for consideration by our town. Now after eleven attempts in the past twenty years to have the Quinn bill meaningfully included through the collective bargaining process, they have come to us, the citizens of town meeting, to request our consideration of the legislation for which they have waited so patiently. Meanwhile, nearly half the communities in our state have granted this support to their local police, and as well, our state has granted this support to our entire state police force. This is not an insignificant factor in recruitment of what our community requests and requires, the brightest and the best to ensure our public safety. Having worked on this educational program for law enforcement officers with the State Board of Higher Education in 1969 and 1970, before it was passed and named in honor of the former House Speaker and Attorney General Bob Quinn in 1970, I had been heartened to see the development of top drawer criminal justice and law enforcement programs grounded in the liberal arts and sciences in both public and independent institutions of higher education in our Commonwealth. Thousands of law enforcement officers throughout this state have completed these programs and have justly received the commensurate compensation from their communities which is granted under the Quinn bill. In a knowledge-based, high-tech society in which our police must work and protect us, are they to be given any less consideration than our teachers? Should not our police receive incremental compensation related to the degrees they have pursued and paid for out of pocket, just as we grant our teachers in our school districts? Are these dedicated persons who place their lives on the line for us every shift of every day to be treated as second-class public servants, or are they to be granted the equity and equality with which we just remunerate their fellow knowledge-based professionals in the teaching profession? I am very concerned as a citizen about rising taxes. What kind of town that is looking outward to a capital-outlay program of tens of millions of dollars on its wish list for our next few years? Turn our backs on the plights and please do first injustice to those on the front lines protecting our lives, limbs, and property. This is especially true in terms of the straightforward prospective concessions ensured by our police force in its position paper which was available at tonight's town meeting. For all these reasons, I request your support for this backing of Acton's finest in this their hour of need. Whenever we meet our hour of need, our police officers are surely there for each of us, a great personal sacrifice and risk to their own lives, their personal fortunes and those of their own families, and the principle very special to them, their sacred honor in upholding the law and keeping the peace in this our first-class town of Acton. They fully deserve the wholehearted support of each of us by our voting in favor of Article Nine tonight. I thank you.
I'll take the speakers in a counterclockwise fashion. You're next, Mr. Tavener.
Hello, Katie. This is Darby Hill Rhodes. I have a couple of points of clarification as well to add to this questions you have here in front of you. I have both pros and cons to add to it. I did attend the meeting that the union presented and I've looked into some of the articles and some of the history, have had discussions with people about it, even as late as tonight about it. First of all, I take difference with the selectmen in telling us that they have no right to bring it to the town meeting. I think that we are the people who are deciding ultimately who's going to pay, what we're going to pay for policemen and the union negotiation, and you are the tools, you are the people as management that are hired to represent the town in those negotiations, and it's our decision, not yours ultimately. So they have a right of appeal to us. They have a perfect right to come here anytime, like any other citizen, to present themselves as a set of articles in front of the town board, a town meeting, and I take difference with the assumption that you are in charge of it. On the other hand, I take difference with the police. Because you know...
You're not going to go home safely either way.
That's right.
You don't have to worry about the lights in your car being on.
No, that's right. I feel comfortable. I've lived here long enough to feel comfortable that I can speak my mind in town meeting, and I think that people expect me to. As a matter of history, for those in the room who don't realize it, the police actually were given the ability to have the Quinn bill, and the gentleman here representing the union probably doesn't even know that, that the Quinn bill was put in front of the union numbering twenty years ago, probably, at least oh, close to twenty years ago, and instead of taking that, they took the incentive program. That incentive program you have in your existing contract is a result of a negotiation that created that, and because the union thought that this Quinn bill wasn't going to stay around, it would be go away and they'd have something that was permanent in their contract, which you have, and you've negotiated away the Quinn bill year after year after year. So in some respects, you're just as well to blame as the town, so little matter of fact there. The problem you have here is this is a year of negotiations with the unions, which I brought up, and I think, I spoke a little bit earlier, that my impression is, is that we have some problems with our management in how they view the unions in this town. I personally feel that there's something wrong in terms of how our management is negotiating with the unions. When I have firemen sending out letters, handing out leaflets, and we have the police coming here, that's sending a signal to me that there's something wrong. Whether or not they're right or wrong, there's disagreements. When they feel that they have to show up in town meeting and hand something to me, right? If I was in management, which I am in this town, I think there's something wrong in what you're doing. So I think the position should be that you go to the meetings with a spirit of cooperation, and they'll feel a lot more comfortable that they don't have to come here to us, and that there's, you know, I think you need to take that into consideration in the year that's coming up, and there's a number of fine points that are being brought to you that I could go on in which I won't do a town meeting, but there are a number of points that are in severe disagreement and a lot of legal costs that are being incurred by our town because of the position the management's taken with these unions, and it's not a question of the money, it's other issues, and it's other people's egos, and I don't like to pay legal expenses for your egos, because it's us who are paying for it. You're our representative, and don't forget that.
Lady at the front microphone.
Joan Toussaint Lane, 7 Ethan Allen Drive.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name, ma'am.
Joan Toussaint Lane, 7 Ethan Allen Drive. I guess I have two points, one a question and one a, just an observation, that the presentation tonight tells me that our police benefit from a really fine compensation package overall, and yet they're coming to us tonight to say that they still feel the need for this Quinn bill. I don't feel like I'm in a position to judge the merits, but what they're saying, that message that they're giving to us is very important to me. I think of them as public servants whom I would go out of my way to provide an awful lot of support for. We expect them to be experts in just about everything, and it's kind of the same way we do with our teachers, and so when they give us this message, I think it's one we really have to listen to, and as much as we've got a lot of good factual information tonight, that question hasn't been answered for me. The other piece is, I think there's an implicit message here that the quality of the educational offerings isn't at stake, that whether it's the town compensation package that gives an incentive to police officers to continue with their education, or the Quinn bill offering, I assume, but I'd like to hear somebody tell me explicitly that there is no qualitative difference, because that would matter very much to me too. So it's kind of like questions I'd like to have somebody address. Thank you.
I'm sorry. If you've asked questions, we should try to answer them right now. Ms. Tavernier, are you prepared to comment, or someone comment on those two questions?
I can give a whack on your difference between the education incentives and, well, the contract incentive program, the negotiated incentive program, gives a bonus to officers with college credit up to sixty credits. The Quinn begins at sixty credits, so there are actually about three officers who would lose under the Quinn bill, who would get less pay, because they're now being given a bonus for taking college credits. They're still not at the associate degree level, so they would lose under the Quinn bill. The Quinn bill doesn't give you increments on your way up to a degree, it starts with a degree and then goes to the next degree and the next degree, unlike what the teachers' contracts used to do, I don't know if they still do.
Now, do you have another question as well, or not?
I don't know, I think it was just that, if maybe perhaps in the discussion as people respond to other questions, again, my personal feeling was, I wanted to have a sense of what made this bill in spite of all the other good things that clearly we compensate our police officers with, why they're still very focused on the value of the Quinn bill to them. It's an issue that's significant to me, and it's not come clear.
Fine. Fred, did you have a comment on that?
Yes, I'd like to make that. As we pointed out, you're presently funding thirty-two thousand dollars. We're asking that overall, to put in twenty-eight thousand dollars more, you qualify for state funds to augment that, and that brings that incentive up that much more, it makes it more of a meaningful incentive, it would make more of the officers that have partial credits go back and finish their education, and would encourage the officers who have associate's degrees to take it to the next level, bachelor's degree, perhaps even master's degree. But again, these funds are shared with the state. The state will kick in half so long as we accept the measures tonight, and that's why we're pursuing the Quinn bill, as opposed to just normally increasing the existing degree incentive, because we're getting closer and closer to that threshold where you're almost going to be paying for it, so it's a win-win for the situation for the town.
The gentleman at the back microphone.
Good evening. I'm Leonard Schwab, 3 Old Lantern Road. I see this discussion as hinging on one single subject, and that is professional development recognition, and I'd like to get Mr. Hayes or Officer Rassler to clarify the wording of chapter, I guess it's forty-one of section one oh eight. Mr. Hayes used the words that this offers compensation for degrees in law enforcement, and I wanted to clarify that that is precisely the case, that any old degree does not qualify. Is that correct?
Fred, you can answer the question. Go ahead.
Yes. Chapter one oh eight, section forty-one only pertains to, uh, chapter forty-one, section one oh eight, excuse me, only pertains to law enforcement degrees. There are no other degrees that will qualify for Quinn bill funding reimbursement by the state, and therefore if the Quinn bill were to be adopted, the department would be held to fund any other degrees.
Having clarified that, what is the position currently under the current thirteen-hundred, seventeen-hundred, two-thousand-dollar incentive deal with the town? Do they fund any studies, or again, only law enforcement studies?
Those are law enforcement studies, but however, every officer that has a degree now, if the Quinn bill were accepted tonight, would have to certify that to the Board of Higher Education, so there may actually be an instance where the Board of Higher Education will say, geez, we don't accept this degree because we didn't accreditate this college. So therefore, the funding we're seeking may actually be less depending on the Board of Education, because they're the ones that certify each individual officer that we send off after the completion of the program.
Having clarified that we are indeed talking about law enforcement development here, I guess I would take a little issue with what Mrs. Tavernier said about the force asking for a raise. I don't see that as being the case at all. We're looking strictly at a professional development recognition situation here, and anyone in this room who is a professional, be they attorney, doctor, engineer, or otherwise, knows what it's like to be taking continuing education credits all the time. So I think this is strictly what we're talking about here, is professional development and nothing more or less. And I also believe, one last observation here, I find these numbers that I heard tonight, thirteen-hundred dollars for an AA incentive, seventeen-hundred for a BS, and seventeen, two-thousand rather, for an MS, I think I personally find those numbers shameful. If you think they're not shameful, then when we talk about the big S budget coming up in a couple of articles, let's talk about those numbers again. Let's put it in perspective that way. I think this is a good thing to vote for, and I'm for it. Thank you.
Ms. Tavernier, do you have a comment based on the answers to the questions that were given to the last gentleman?
Yes, I do. I do, Mr. Murray. A counterpoint, in the opinion of the Attorney General, when he was asked the question, do these incentives only apply to law enforcement degrees? His opinion is, I would not restrict the phrase "education in the field of police work" solely to degree programs in criminal justice and law enforcement. The term "education in the field of police work" cannot be limited solely to courses in police science, law, and law enforcement and criminal justice. Courses of study in sociology, psychology, English, mathematics, chemistry, other liberal arts subjects, and business administration contribute to the improvement of police officers and the effectiveness of police departments, and thus cannot be set as a matter of law to be outside the field of police works. I would further comment that these bonuses, the differences are that they're being funded with tax dollars, and that's why the selectmen's concerns are so great on this.
Lady at the back.
Carol Hawley, 39 Pope Road. The Acton Police Force has duties that many of us would think about.
I'm sorry, miss, could you speak right into the microphone, because I think you could be better heard.
Okay, I'll try. The Acton Police Force has duties that many of us never think about. Sometimes they have more to do than issue traffic tickets and gather up adolescents drinking beer in the woods. Sometimes they have to knock on a mother's door and tell her that her son is dead. This is a task that has to be accomplished with sympathy and concern and an awareness that the recipient of the message is in an agitated state. I do not know what sort of training is required to perform this job, as well as Detective Gray performed it for me. I know his demeanor was perfect. I also know that other Acton policemen may someday have to perform this task, and I know how important it is for them to be properly prepared. As I look around town, I notice our citizens in the best of automobiles, the nicest of clothes, and shopping in expansive supermarkets for gourmet foodstuffs. I notice the landscaping crews and the size of the new homes. Acton has become a quality-oriented community. If we're willing to pay for the top-of-the-line cars and food and clothes, how can we not be willing to pay for top-of-the-line police? These individuals are prepared to risk our lives for us. They are required to help us in times of extreme stress and trauma. What are they worth? I strongly urge you to support this article.
Sidney Johnston.
I'm Sidney Johnston, 51 Quaybuck Road. I would like to make just a few points in support of adoption of the Quinn bill and passage of Article Nine. First of all, the comment about state taxes that present, our, my state taxes are funding somebody else's Quinn bill reimbursement, some other communities. I would like my state taxes to fund Acton's Quinn bill reimbursements. Secondly, a educated police force, I'm sure, is a superior police force. Personal development, educational development, and professional continuing education are extremely important aspects of modern society. Particularly, I believe the police have a real interest in understanding computers, a real interest in being familiar with the basic principles of psychology, a real interest in being familiar with the basic principles of science, as pointed out by Ms. Tavernier as our acceptable subject to study for Quinn bill reimbursement. And finally, I would like to point out that the recommendation of the Finance Committee first came from a four-to-four split, and at a later meeting went to the people supporting it perhaps, and defeated it two to five.
You don't have the right to speak yet, okay?
Well, if I made a mistake, I'd like to be corrected. What was the error?
Do you mind being interrupted while he corrects you?
No, not at all.
All right, then go ahead.
The delay was not due to people who supported, I mean, there were some people who supported who were not at the second meeting, and there were also people who just wanted additional information. The vote was in fact, a majority vote on the whole FinCom was against the article. So even if both of the missing members were there, they would not have influenced the outcome.
Thank you. Now back to your main argument, please.
What I said was not corrected at all, it's simply confirmed, and that the, the point that I wanted to make however, is that it was not a unanimous vote, but that there was a division of opinion on the FinCom. So I would urge everyone to please vote for Article Nine.
David Black, 237 Central Street. It's a little hesitation that I get up to speak against an article as being portrayed as a, you should vote for this because you, because this is show support for the police. I think that there are some other issues here, and I think there's a very important issue about town governance, about how we as citizens of town, of this town, want to govern this town. What bothers me about this article, let me stop there for a moment. I do support the police. I recently had meet officers of Acton Police, and they were prompt, professional, courteous, and efficient. I think they're a wonderful police force, and I think we are very, very fortunate to have them. Now, what bothers me about this article is, as Ms. Tavernier pointed out, the way it got here. This is essentially an end run around collective bargaining. As has been pointed out by the FinCom, this, in other towns, this is negotiating collective bargaining, but here, the police have, after failing to prevail in their position to collective bargaining, they've done end run around it and brought the article directly here. Now, if we vote for this tonight, this is the first of many similar articles. The firemen are about handing out flyers. We approve this one, the firemen are going to have an I could have a V-8 experience, and they're going to write a citizen petition, and you're going to see it at the Fall Special Town Meeting. And behind that, there's all kinds of other things that can be written in a citizen's petition. We'll be doing shift differentials, minimum staffing, and I don't know what else. And before long, we're going to be spending better part of a night at town meeting, going over the details of the police and the fire, and the fire contracts, and for all I know, the teacher contracts and the highway contracts, and I don't know what else. Now, I think this is, this is a very bad idea, because I think everybody loses. I think we in town meeting lose because we have to spend all of our time working on these minutiae. One of the whole points of having the selectmen and having the town manager is we delegate responsibility for this, for these littler issues to them, so that on a day-to-day basis, they can deal with them. And instead, we wind up doing, we wind up having to spend our time on this. Second, I think the town, the town selectmen or the town manager, management loses because the collective bargaining process is essentially eviscerated. Anytime an important issue comes up and the employees don't like position town has taken, returns to citizen petition, it comes to town meeting, and we get to argue it all over again. The collective bargaining process is there for a reason. And finally, I think that the police and employees lose because, given the choice between, between town management that understands the state's relation laws and has a consistency and a constancy and some degree of support for the employees, and town meeting as who's going to write the details of the contracts, while consistency and taking a citizen position and understand what you're doing is very important to that, and as I'm sure the moderator knows from personal experience, town meeting doesn't even have to be consistent from night to night, let alone year, let alone year to year. If I were, if I were a town employee, I'd much rather have the, I'd much rather town management, because at least I know what's going to go on there. Can't predict what town meeting is going to do. I mean, if this was just about the Quinn bill in isolation, and I could be sure I was never going to see another article that came around collective bargaining and came directly to town meeting, I'd probably vote for it. This sets up a really bad precedent. And just to make it clear that what I'm talking about here is the precedent, and not whether I support the police or not. If this had been a citizen's petition to allow civilian flagmen in Acton instead of police details, I would be up here urging a no vote on the article for the same reason, that that kind of thing is part of collective bargaining, it belongs in collective bargaining process. So I urge you to think very carefully about this article and vote against it. This is not necessarily the last time you're going to see the Quinn bill. The right thing and what should happen here is that both sides should go away from this, go back to collective bargaining, which is going to happen this year, and maybe, maybe next year, maybe the year after. Come back to us with a Quinn bill article that has been agreed to in collective bargaining and has the support of the town, and that's the right way to do it. This article is wrong, it's premature, it's going to set a bad precedent, and everybody's going to lose. I would respectfully ask you to vote no.
Listen, that comment about town meeting not being consistent night to night, that's something I should worry about, we're giving a lot of signals here, because if it is, talk to me later, please. Mr. Schupert.
Thank you. Trey Schupert, 11 Mohawk Drive. I'm the chairman of the Personnel Board. For the record, I did park legally tonight, and I will obey the speed laws.
Doesn't matter.
The Personnel Board took a look at the Quinn bill, and our conclusion was, it is extremely vague, and I think that's one of the reasons why we have disagreements going around. We support the Board of Selectmen, we unanimously voted to not approve or not recommend the article to the town warrant for the reasons that were listed. Rather than rehashing things, I just want to bring out a couple of points. First of all, we agree with what the selectmen said. Second of all, there was a question of how much extra it's going to cost us this year, and that number has been portrayed as twenty-eight thousand. That is actually incorrect. In fiscal nineteen ninety-eight, it will cost us one hundred and sixty-two thousand. We have to budget for the entire amount, and in the following year, depending upon what the state votes, that's two years from now, they may decide to fund it at fifty percent, they may not, but in the meantime, we have to pay that amount, and that's the way it goes every year. And I think as has been proved, they have yet to fund it any more than two years in a row at fifty percent. This is a very emotional issue. I'm coming out, I'm trying to come at it from my perspective as a human resources professional, and one of the things that's illegal to put into a job description or to put in an ad that a bachelor's or a master's or an associate's degree is required to do a job, specifically what's, what you can legally put into job descriptions and what you can legally put into advertisements is a degree is preferred or equivalent experience. Our conclusion at the Personnel Board is, implementing this law does not guarantee our increased safety as citizens or the safety of the police officers, nor does it guarantee increased job performance. We do support the current plan as it is. It's a bonus incentive plan for people to obtain their degrees, and specifically for job-related courses that would, would help the talent of Acton, the police department improve their, their regular job performance. Thanks.
Chandler at the back.
Yes, Nick Muller, 30 Taylor Road. The, several people have mentioned reasons for opposing this, and I have one I think that hasn't, has just barely been touched on, and my concern is that I've always thought people should be compensated based primarily on performance, and to link a never, what sounds like a continuous compensation, because they've done one accomplishment which has gone, gotten a degree, seems to be a fallacy. I certainly support the police department. I've had interactions with them, and needed their assistance, and it's a fine force, and I certainly support encouraging education. But at, at my company, we would never offer to pay somebody in perpetuity and added a bonus or additional money because they got a degree. Uh, we support them in their degree and support their tuition payments, but it's up to them to turn that degree into improved performance. And that's something that only time will, uh, show whether they can do that. So I, I'm strongly opposed to, uh, this bill, this Warren article, because I can't, uh, support paying someone for an accomplishment on, uh, expected performance forever.
Gentleman at the back?
Thank you. Ed Adelman, five thirty-four Old Stonebrook Road. Having told you my, is this on?
I, I think it is. Try speaking directly into it and see what happens.
My name is Ed Adelman.
Yes, very good.
It's, it's on now. Uh, I live at, I live at five thirty-four Old Stonebrook Road. And obviously, having told you my name and address, I'm not gonna speak against the police. I think that, I, uh, my brother was a police officer, and I have nothing but the ultimate respect for the, for the law enforcement profession. Uh, I was not going to speak, and I didn't participate in your straw poll, but other speakers have moved me to get out of, out of my seat. Uh, this is becoming, in the words of some of my fellow residents, a referendum on the quality of the police force, which I think is unfortunate, because I, I don't think that was the article of the motion. Uh, I think we have a very fine force, an excellent force, a very well-educated force, which is why I don't understand the article before us, and I have difficulty supporting it. From the, what I, the numbers I've heard, a large number of our current police officers, either because they're internally motivated or because they are sufficiently motivated by the existing incentive program, have received a degree in law enforcement or some related study. The issue that, that both presenters touched upon is the issue of retainage. Do we retain qualified police officers? And I've seen no evidence tonight that the Quinn bill would lead to retaining highly qualified police officers. I, I understand it would pay them more, and I think if this were a referendum on paying police more, we'd, we'd probably agree to do that. Uh, we'd certainly wanna pay the DPW more for the phenomenal job with a blizzard last week. But I don't think that's what we're here about. I haven't seen the connection between the Quinn bill and retaining qualified police officers, so I'm, probably won't vote tonight, but I, I had to address the concerns I heard that this was somehow a referendum on the quality of our force, which I don't believe it to be.
Mr. Hudson?
Dury, hundred and three Foster Street, Board of Selectmen. Uh, I was gonna speak on two points, process and respond to Mr. Katie. Uh, the gentleman that stood before me at the microphone handled the process argument very well, so I won't, I won't repeat that. Uh, I think Mr. Katie made some unfair, uh, comments about management in town, and probably particularly about the town manager and the Board of Selectmen by implication. Uh, folks, uh, we have collective bargaining between various units in the town manager's office. Uh, that is governed by a great deal of law, regulations, and case law and practice. And management has to be very careful about complying with all those rules and regulations. Uh, the labor groups, uh, have recourse, the joint labor management, uh, they can grieve. There are several things they can do if they're unhappy with us. They can also come to town meeting, uh, which they're, uh, doing, at least the police are doing here for a raise, and the gentleman that was here before me inferred that the Fire Department might do in the future. Now, we are elected, or appointed, depending on which board it is, uh, by you or by your representatives. And contracts are negotiated, and it is part of our duty to see that you get the benefit of those contracts. In other words, as the labor groups quite rightly hold management to the letter of the contracts, we try to do the same thing. And we try to bargain. Now, bargaining is a game theory. That is, there are chips on the table. And once somebody says, "I want this," they're usually involved in being asked to give that. It is a game theory. You cannot say, "Well, I'll give you that up," and, and that's a matter in isolation. If you indeed affirmatively vote of this article tonight, and an appropriate amount of money is appropriated for it, or found in the budget, or raised in some fashion, and we go forward, the police have said here tonight that they will do certain things in negotiation. Now, they're honorable people, and I think they will come in and they will do exactly that. They will say, "We will give up whatever they said they would give up," okay? But they will also want some things in that negotiation. And the wants and the gives are a dynamic process across the table. And by coming and seeking a legislative enactment of the Quinn bill, they have put their foot on that scale. If, if you wanna do that perfectly, all right. I conceive it to be our duty to recommend that you not, because we are trying to get the best deal we can for the tax dollar, which includes a balance of fair compensation for the employees in town. We will continue to do that. If you want to vote this tonight, fine, but just as the speaker ahead of me said, recognize there are repercussions. Uh, the police budget will go up by some sum, we've debated which number tonight. Uh, I think it would be fair to assume that it is quite probable that other employee groups will ask for either an educational acknowledgement or something in the way of a stipend for education, because as we have seen with our labor unions, you know, what one gets, the other kinda wants. I mean, that's human nature. Eighty-some-odd percent of your expenditures, of your tax dollars, are in salaries. It's the biggest item. Just remember, when you vote tonight, when all the arguments are done, this may be the beginning of a faster increase. Pay goes up all the time, pay and benefits. But remember, we may be discussing the beginning of an acceleration of that process tonight. And I would ask you to assume that your elected officials are acting conscientiously and honestly and not out of ego. Thank you.
Gentleman at the back?
Jim Corwin, seventy Maple Street. I just felt it was important to make this one last point. Twelve to thirteen years ago, uh, this town was assured by all the experts, by the state, by the best lawyers in the state, that if it would, if it would just sign this one little contract that bound it for the next twenty years, um, that it would never regret it, and that we'd in fact make money off the deal. We've been paying through the nose ever since. I, of course, refer to Nezwick. I would rather see that what compensation the police get comes through negotiations that have to go through a regular cycle, on a, on a regular basis, rather than through something which could for propensity, um, force us to pay monies that we don't even know what they are today, so.
Mr. Hayes, you've been standing longer than Dr. Donald, but you've already spoken once, and so I'll recognize Dr. Donald.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I dearly respect our town fathers and mothers, and I respect the police force. And both our arguments have been heard on both sides, and I would respectfully move the question.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Debate is cut off. We will now vote on the, uh, motion as read originally. You all sure you know what the motion was? I think you do. No one is saying no, so we will now vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article nine, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay?
Nay.
I think the motion has lost, but let me take it by standing vote. I just, I, I, I mean, I think this is important that we have a good understanding here. Not that we wanna know if it's voted, mind you. But my hearing at my age is going. Would all in favor, please stand? If I was to be seated, would all opposed, please stand? Okay, you'd be seated, the motion has lost. We move to, uh, Article ten now. Fred, did you have a comment? Uh, what was your, what did you, what are you rising for? Go ahead, if you want, if you wanna make a comment thanking people, now go right ahead.
I'd just like to thank one and all of you for just giving us equal consideration, and I appreciate you giving us your input. Thank you very much.
Let's see, there, there should be a, a motion under Article ten, we are moving to it. Who wants to make the motion on Article ten? Uh, Ms. Tavernier?
I would move to take no action on Article ten.
It's been moved and seconded to take no action under Article ten. Does anybody need to discuss it? The Finance Committee wish to make a comment? Nobody wishes to comment it? I see no one... Yes, you agree no action is appropriate, thank you. Anybody wishing to speak? I see no one coming to a microphone to vote. All in favor of taking no action on Article ten, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay? Motion carries. We'll move to, uh, uh, what is it, ten thirty? Ten twenty? I knew the clock was wrong, I knew you were trying to beat me out of an hour's worth of pay here. But I knew there was some, one clock says ten thirty, one says nine fifteen, okay? And who said we didn't know what time it was, Don? All right? This one is correct. Are we, uh, prepared to go ahead with the school budget tonight at this time? I'm, I'm really asking the, uh, well... I wanna know if the School Committee was prepared, and they're saying yes. If anybody wishes to make a motion, they, they can make one. Well, that, that is probably not the greatest motion, because we're probably gonna come back again sometime. So maybe you'd like to say when and where? Well, no, you gotta make the motion, uh, fully. Where? Oh, good, that, that, it's just, it's nice if it's in the motion, though, you know, just for the, for the fun of it. Let me just check something. Do I hear a second? Let me just, uh, I just wanna check something. Yeah, this isn't a debatable motion, yes, it is. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn till tomorrow night at seven thirty. Is there discussion on that motion? Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Cadillac?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Cadillac. Quiet, please.
Perhaps this is not the time to start the school budget, but we could take a couple of other articles out of order and get them out of the way tonight. It's pretty early by town meeting standards. I urge that we vote against adjourning at this time.
Okay, other comments, see no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of, of Mr. Gresser's motion, say aye.
Aye.
All say no?
No.
Uh, motion is carried. We're adjourned till tomorrow night at seven thirty.